All of this council meeting order, Michelle, would you call the board, please?
Bruce Tickle.
President.
Dan Schomer.
President.
Doug Humphrey.
President.
Dan Bebuck.
President.
Jody Lee.
President.
Karen Wilson.
President.
I'll see if I can fumble around and get us on, please.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council meeting minutes of September 2nd, this is the 15th, right? Yes, it is. Have you all had a chance to look through those? And if there are any additions or corrections, we take care of those now.
I'll make a motion to re-approve them.
Okay.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded to approve the council minutes of September 2nd. Any other question or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign? Motion carried. Okay, very good, thank you. The audit will be next, Hunter. There comes Sarah. Sarah, do you want a few minutes? We can wait. Sarah, I can't tell you how good it is to see you reporting on the audit.
I'll second that.
The best audit presentations we've had, and I'm not disparaging anybody else, very clear when you were doing that for us, and we all understood that. I've even told other people that. Your father, not for me. Anyway, thank you very much for taking us on and for being so picket getting everything done. We appreciate that. And Arianne, too. Arianne's been involved in making sure we get this. This is what we did. Last year, when we pushed the first in the year, can you recall that? We were right up to the last meeting in December when we had the audit. Everybody got one?
Well, we got those, we need...
Vugs?
We got this.
Okay.
We got enough.
One more bug for...
I don't have, what's that thing with the brown?
And we do need one more.
One more.
I don't have one. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
It is a pleasure to be here.
Pleased to have you.
I'm going to speak mainly from the handout. By any means, if you have questions on the financial report after you get a chance to look at it, they're free to contact me. I'm happy to go through it in more detail if you'd as well. The first page, if you turn to the first page, is the audit results. So I have to think of this as kind of the report card to be audited. The financial statements, when we come out, we really do two different types of audits. One audit is an audit of your financial statements. The second audit is an audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And the purpose of that audit is two-fold. One is to look at your interim control system and to test it to make sure that it's actually functioning as it was designed to function. And the other part of that audit is to look at your compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and other types of agreements. So we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is the highest form of opinion that you can have. The government auditing standards audit, when there's interim control issues, there's three levels of weaknesses. The very top and the most severe is a material weakness. And that's saying that you don't have controls in place and there's no compensating controls over those errors or holes in the system. You don't have any material weaknesses. The next level is significant deficiencies. And what that says is you have some issues that we'll want to resolve, but you do have some compensating controls in place. So we think that if an error occurred, it would be detected. Those significant deficiencies are in the back of this found book. And really, we have them over your receipt system, your payroll system, and your expense system. And the majority of those are caused by the access within the system, the ability to get into a different module. And I've sat down with Arianne, and she's in the process of correcting those at this point. So that's good. And then the last level is control deficiency. Please, to call these management advice comments. And that's in that separate letter. And so it's things that, it might be things that we've seen as we've gone about different audits for efficiency standpoint, or something we saw while we were doing the audit that we wanted you to be aware of, and we wanted you, you can't fix it if you don't know about it. So we like to make you aware of all of those. But they're not considered to be a high-risk type of line. And the last are compliance, and we had no matters to report in the smart compliance. No matters. The next graph is over your revenues of the district. And this is looking at, I'm sorry, of the village. And this is looking at the village as if it's a consolidated and was looking at everything together on a full accrual basis.
Page three. Is that page three?
Yes, page three, you're right. The village's total net position increased from the current year by 3. almost $7 million. Your governmental funds contributed about 3.3 billion of that. Any business-type activities, which is water and sewer and Camden Center, contributed 395,000 of that. Your total revenue for 2025 was 15.1 million compared to 2024, which was 14.4 million. That's about a $717,000 increase. If you look at the grants and contributions line, that increased about 373,000. And that is primarily due to your federal revenue that you had this year from the American Rescue Act rate that you expended. Property taxes, the village has three tips. They generated about 1.5 million this year. Page 91 in this document gives you a 10-year history of your assessed values, your rates, and your extensions. So I always think that's a good page if you're looking for a little bit of history to look back on. Sales tax increased from 1.9 million to 2.6 million this year. And that was offset by a slight decrease in other taxes, which was primarily a personal property replacement tax, which is down throughout the year, about 30%. The other is primarily interest revenue. So your interest revenue this year was 917,000 compared to the prior year, which was about 147,000. Incentive sum revenues. The next page looks at your expenditures for the village. 2025, you had 11.5 million dollars worth of expenditures. And in 2024, there was about 10.6 million dollars. And again, this is on a full accrual basis. And so what you're seeing as the major increase this year in the expenditures is primarily due to your IMRF liability and your OPEB liability increase this year. And those are actuarially determined. And then the village books to the amount the actuary says is our liability for the year. The Water, Work, and Sewerage Fund had a change in net position of about 572,000. The operating income was 213,000 in Water, Works, and Sewerage. And that's after your depreciation of 284,000. The Camden Center had an operating loss this year. After depreciation of 70,000, your loss was about 127,000 this year. But your operating revenue increased from 93,000 last year to 123,000. And that's because you had more events. Fifteen events compared to nine events in the prior year. And then the very last thing I just wanted to mention was your debt. So as of April 30th of 25, the village had alternative revenue bonds. You had a direct placement bond and a general obligationally funding bond. The total of those was about 5 million compared to about 5,700,000 the previous year. You had principal payments up here of 1,084,000. And you paid interest of about 246,000. Happy to address any questions you might have.
Comments about the sales tax? If you go back to that bar chart with the sales tax revenues on page three. The 2.6 million of the sales tax differences last year, 2.8. We received a notification from the department of revenue. So we had to recognize that decrease in revenue within the same fiscal year of the notification. So that's why we had such a significant gap this semester and this year. So looking forward, it should be around the same.
Matt recognized the entire amount, not just the one-year figures. Right. Took care of it for the entire duration.
Well, it kind of looks like we took in more revenue. We had some losses here in the Camden Center. But on a whole, I always ask on these when we have these audits, so we're doing better than we did last year?
I agree.
Yeah, okay. And we're going in the right direction and all our fines that you always come up with. Little things that we need to kind of improve upon.
The findings, yes, yes. What we look forward for in the findings is that proactive, what can we do to resolve it? So I definitely foresee some calm.
Immediately.
And it's always seems to be the little things that happen that's simple enough to correct. But unless you know it's brought to your attention, you really don't know.
Right.
So I like that page. That really helps us go in the forward direction and get a better track. Helping help eliminate some of the problems you would have in the future with the audits.
Yeah, when you have a small staff, you have to get someone creative.
Yeah.
So we have made improvement also in the division of authority problems that have popped up from time to time also.
Right, that's what they're working on is resolving those.
And those would include taking further advantage of some of the features in the software, which we've never had an opportunity to use. But we now have planned to incorporate some additional limitations that, you know, you mentioned that, limitations on what people do. So a person in one module can't access an area of which they do not have responsibility for in another module. And then some checks and cross-checks.
Checks, it's a change from view, or from having that edit access to a view. They can look at it if they need to, you know, look at utility bills. But if they don't oversee their utility line, they're not going to be able to edit things. They'll just don't do it.
So does this, page 96, on the findings related to basic financial statements, does that coincide with what you're saying about the software? Because I'm really concerned about, one says the effect of misappropriations of assets could occur in a timely manner due to that software not being...
Yeah, let's direct it to Sarah.
Yeah, a significant deficiency, so that something, an error could occur. It would eventually be detected, but maybe not as timely as you'd like it to be. So what we were talking about was doing different, well, what Arianne was saying, we're locking down the system so that someone doesn't have the ability to change something that someone else wants to see.
So then it's common to have four other village employees have access to it? That's common? I'm just learning all this, I don't know. You wrote down here that you have four village employees that have access. Is that normal?
No, no. And that's why we'd like you to lock down the system a little bit. So they have unlimited access within the system. And what we're saying is if you're the billing clerk, you really shouldn't have access to collecting receipts. Or you shouldn't be able to write off something and not have someone else have to approve it within the system. But you do have those capabilities within your system.
So how are we working on that, then? Are we working on that, how?
Yes, that's what she meant by...
So she would, they would have received these, what, last week?
Yeah, so still going out. So we'll have to discuss with the board if there's a process where the finance director can come back and tell us her findings and how things have changed. Because I notice in there, there's an additional responsibility for the assistant administrator also. And I notice there's a significant deficiency with only one person doing payroll.
Right.
So these are things that need to be addressed immediately.
As long as we're working on it, I'm okay with that, though.
Yeah, and there are some, these are additional, you know, in addition to the cross-checks that we already have. For example, no payroll gets generated and amounts authorized at the bank without a second person involved. The way we have to thread the needle is that because we have a small staff, we have people whose normal function does not maybe include a need to edit within accounts payable. But if they're backing up the person who does have principal responsibility for it because they're, you know, vacation or sick or something like that, we have to have the ability to back that up.
She, it says in the report that it would be the finance director.
It would be as long as that person's available, too. But then that finance director potentially is serving both roles. They're doing it, and we have to make sure they're not then approving it. And to weave the permissions, because their normal role would be to approve that.
So would it go to the assistant administrator?
Or myself, then, for the approval level.
Then we'd get back to four people.
And that's okay. It's okay if it's four people. It's not okay if it's four people that have other duties that conflict with...
I think we have a fantastic staff. And I don't consider them to be a small staff. There's quite a few people in this administration building now compared to what it used to be. So I think we have the perfect amount of staff. I don't think that they are doing the right thing sometimes, but it's a quick fix.
Right, and again, you can't fix them if they're not called to it.
Right, correct. And we appreciate that.
That's part of the point, is to call them to your attention so everybody's aware of them. And this happens, you know, as you, you're right, your business department has grown. And oftentimes, when you have someone hired into a position, they become the specialist in those positions, which is great. But then you need to have those compensating controls that you have, the checks and balances in place under those positions. But I think that's where we're at at this point. Yeah, Arianne got these and called me the next second. What are we going to do?
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Steve, anything else? You know, just comments as far as from, I think the recommendations are excellent, and I agree with them. It allows us to mature and take the software farther than we've been able to take it before. It will require a very detailed elaborating between principal responsibilities and those permissions, and also secondary responsibilities and those permissions. The system does have logging capabilities of everything that takes place within it. But again, a log does not necessarily mean that it's discovered in a timely manner. It can be an inadvertent error. Or also, what we have to protect against is a situation where unbeknownst to everybody else on staff, somebody has been in and done something that they absolutely should not have. So I think those are well-founded. Allows us to use the, some more of the features, some of the things that we've talked about implementing going forward, our internal accounts to service things like vehicle purchase, which we've got the situation again where equipment for the public works department with a long lead time was ordered out of one fiscal year. And we're still waiting to take delivery on that. And how best to record those so that the financial reports that you receive during the year better reflect our situation? Because we've had to squirrel away and set aside that money, and we can't consider it available for anything else because we're under contract to pay for a truck when it comes in. So I think those are the kinds of areas also that we can strengthen this next year, and we have plans in place.
And you always say you have to have, make sure nothing gets through the cracks where we end up with somebody, let's say, for say, spending money they're not supposed to spend. You always want to have two set of eyes on it. But then you said, we have four set of eyes on these, on some of them. Too many eyes is bad, but then too many eyes can be good to catch it, but bad if too many people have access to it. That could cause a problem, is what you're saying.
That's right. And yes, again, I think the easiest example is if you're billing water and sewer, then you have the ability to enter it, to write it off, to edit it. And you don't want to have them also collecting cash. Or, you know, touching cash, because then they have too much responsibility, if you will. And, you know, part of it is protecting your employees from...
Yes.
...that as well.
And to clarify, you mentioned four sets of eyes looking at things. Looking at it is not the problem. Looking at it is a good thing. The problem is if too many people that don't need to touch it or have conflicting responsibilities have the right, the permissions to get in. I think we're not aware, and part of our disclosure is we have to tell you during the audit process if we think that anything like that is evidenced. And so we've been able every year to say that, no, we're not aware of it. We don't have any reason to believe that is a problem. But the system as it's set up would allow that.
Well, I think it's important that these finds that Sarah has come up with to get those done in a more timely manner. I mean, we've had an audit before years and years ago. And sitting here, six, eight months later, we're still working on fines, you know? Some take longer than others, and some don't, I realize that. Some of these is like, okay, we see the fines, we're working on it. And I'd like to say we've got them in the staff. But some of them are simpler, some are harder. Most of the harder ones have to do with the software, I guess.
Yeah, well, and then as you're doing them, sometimes there's changes as well. So, you know, you'll have to, you might need to pull Sean in because you need someone that's not sitting down in the office down below. Or you might have to pull other resources in. And, you know, every year we come back and we re-audit them, if you will. So we'll document it and test it again. And, yeah, we might, you know, continue to have tweaks that we think you should do or you're capable of doing.
Well, that's why I've seen some finds, there's a few, come up every audit, two or three years in a row.
Yeah, and to clarify, the finding is not finds, it's not a financial consequence.
Findings, yeah.
So, yeah.
Things that we need to improve upon.
It's things that you've observed or have been able to document where we can up the bar, up our level of the game.
But there again, some of the things, since we're only here part-time, we don't understand the process to fix that findings because it's more involved, and we don't handle that part of it like you guys do. So when we're trying to think, how come it's take us along and get this finding fixed? Well, you gotta do this and this, which we don't realize that, too. That's why some take longer.
And as staff, since we received, you know, the preliminary this past week, you know, we've talked about that and whether or not we can go in and... Because there's a lot of intertwining of these permissions between view only and edit and the cross-responsibilities. So we want to make sure that we set those up correctly. If we have any doubt about whether or not we have done that correctly, we don't want to fix one gate and leave another gate wide open. And so we certainly will be working with Sarah and her firm on review of that. And there may be some need, too, to have some consulting time with Tyler Technologies in order to make sure that they verify the changes that we're going to make.
It's not the easiest button in the system, but it is, it's there. It's just...
It's like your car will let you drive, you know, 120 mile an hour, but it's not a good idea, so... Maybe a bad analogy, but it's putting guardrails up on the system. Okay. Other questions, comments?
That's one less thing we have to do in December.
Actually, I told Sarah, I'm appreciative we're not up against the deadline. Arianne knows, too. Last year, I kept going and going, so we appreciate your efforts and Arianne's efforts to get this whole thing wrapped up in a timely manner. Are we the first in Quad City to do this? No, it's much better than it was, that's what I was saying, and I thank you for that, too. Okay, would there be a motion then? Steve, we ready to accept the audit?
Yes.
Next thing, anybody have anything to add to say? Would there be a motion to accept the audit for...
Make a motion that we accept the audit of Von Sac and Fremont LLP for a year ending April 30th of 2025.
Oh, second.
That's what I couldn't find. Motion's made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Michelle, call the board with a question, please.
Yes. Bruce Tickle.
Yes.
Dan Schomer.
Yes.
Doug Humphrey.
Yes.
Dan Bebuck.
Yes.
Jody Lee.
Yes.
Karen Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carried, from business. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for being here, too. And Mayor, I want to extend the appreciation of the staff towards the council because the policies that are in place and the staff that we have have allowed us to continue a really solid financial position. And we're at about 146% of reserves when that is far beyond common practice or best practices. So we've been able to, you know, I think very wisely use the financial resources that have come in, in fees and taxes. And the city's financial position is very solid. Our position is solid. Okay, did we vote on that? Motion carried, we're done with the audit for the year. Very good, you have your audit reports. I expect to hold you to go through this page by page and give me those figures verbatim as we come back next time.
Well, I'll go through the findings page by page.
I like the graphs. I can understand graphs and get a good hold of what's going on. I think I've got a hold of it.
Well, it's nice when a finding, she gives you a recommendation. You have a starting spot from the person who knows what you're talking about.
I like the way Sarah presents it, too. She used to be with McGlady, and we had McGlady do it years and years ago. And that's where she came in to make the audit report. Okay, item five. Thank you very much, guys. Item five is a consideration of the treasurer's report. So Arianne, you're on again.
August 2025 was a recent month. Just wanted to note the month and fiscal year state performance. General fund is doing great. We're almost at 1 million fiscal year state surplus.
See that?
The Water, Sewerage Fund is still operating negative. That's going to happen. We budgeted a $758,000 deficit. So even though you see that negative, it's okay. We planned it, you know, we incorporated... We planned it, you know, or we, you know, incorporated all these assumptions into developing our budget. We knew that we were...
A lot going on with that fund.
Yeah. Talked on general fund revenues. We had a good property tax distribution. Our non-home rule sales tax and sales tax combined is, you know, $360,000. Canoes tax was similar to the month previous. It's still not as good as it has been in previous years, but the $80,000 is still all right. If you go to the second page, the engineering services, March 2000, and the other monthly, the monthly pension transfer, that's going to be listed every single month. I was going to recommend we take that one off since it is a monthly, so that way we have a better idea of what the not-so-normal topics, category categories would be or things that they look like every other month. Computer equipment for the police department. And then we had two improvements to the parks, one was for Camden Lighting and one was for the Camden Lodge, that's where we reached about $15,000. Cool cash is still sitting pretty good, $11 million, and the rest of our general fund money is in Illinois funds and total cash equivalents for August 31st, 2025 is almost $25 million, $24,928,683.85.
Good.
Also, flip to the other pages, the budget has been loaded into this this month. And I will print off, sorry, make you analyze that report and get those to, they will be in your boxes for you.
Doug, anybody, any questions? Arian, turn the floor.
I'll make a motion to accept the transition.
Second.
For second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Arian, report. Any other questions, comments? I think we do that voiceful, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carried. Thank you, Arian. Okay, moving on to the bills, Doug, semi-monthly and miscellaneous bills.
The regular payments this period are $218,493.81, which includes a $863.99 credit. The top five bills are Illinois Quad City Communication, QCOM, participating entity contributions of $81,454.75. The next two are Merit and Health for medical premiums and admin in the amount of $29,973.38. They're the same, but once for September and once for October, uh, once dated September and once October. Mid-American Energy for gas and electric is $19,296.69. And lighting maintenance, incorporated materials and labor for the Camden Lighting, Are there any others anyone has any questions about?
The AP line, $454.75 to QCOM, is that the Village of Mylan only?
That's our contribution.
That is just ours, not only these whole...
No, it's, it is quarterly.
Yeah, that, that's a regular quarterly payment for our contribution.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions, any further comments?
Yeah, if there aren't any questions, then I make a motion that we pay our bills for this period in the amount of $218,493.81.
All second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the semi-monthly and miscellaneous bills. Michelle, call roll that question, please, sorry.
Doug Humphrey.
Yes.
Dan Verbeck.
Yeah.
Jody Lee.
Yes.
Karen Wilson.
Yes.
Bruce Stickel.
Yes.
Dan Shomar.
Yes.
Doug Humphrey.
Yes.
Dan Verbeck.
Yeah.
Jody Lee.
Yes.
Karen Wilson.
Yes.
Bruce Stickel.
Yes.
Dan Shomar.
Yes.
Doug Humphrey.
Yes.
Michelle.
Motion carried, thank you very much, Doug. Item seven, consideration ordinance 1806 and professional services agreement for establishment and annual administration of TIF District Five. Okay? The TIF districts we've handled before, we have our consultants in Bloomington and Steve's been working with these, so Steve, back in the way.
Yeah, well, this is a precursor to the creation of a kind of a successor to TIF Two. It'll be a different geographic area, but the Tax Increment Financing District on the east side of town, which includes very large properties, it's Deere and Company, the Business Park out by Stern Beverage, UPS, that entire area is Tax Increment Financing District Two, which is at end of life. And actually, we'll have an action for the council to close that off officially at the end of the fiscal year with the finances carried, or excuse me, the end of the calendar year, December 31st, for TIF Two ending with the finances wrapped up by the end of our fiscal year of April 30th. But what this does is start the process of taking on additional property for a 23-year TIF life, which will help us support and develop that still growing area on the east and southeast side of town. And the council had okayed what would be the first project for TIF Five, and we do have, I, I think, follow-up since the last meeting and an opportunity to work with the property owner for a piece of ground that would be city, city-owned, city-developed. That would be part of TIF Five. So this is just the precursor, it's not the final action. Sean, anything that you want to add?
We, we still view the Beltway as a growing area and we have TIF Four out there, but with TIF Two going away, we can start a new TIF and still help the bulk of development and the growth out there.
So Four will be fortified?
Well, Four will be on its own still, but Five will, will grab some of those that TIF Two and potentially some other property too that we view as, as growing.
So we in the process of already buying that piece or...
We've had an appraisal ordered on it and discussion with property owner and we'll find out more this week on how close we are.
Before we make a...
It will come back to, to the council. But what this allows us to do by, by putting a stake in the ground, so to speak, as far as the timeline for A to Five. Now, the final action will still come back to the council. This is getting that, that framework going and setting a benchmark now so that the use of the TIF monies, TIF Five monies can revert back to the passage of the ordinance tonight.
So do we have to drive a stake in the ground to claim that property?
It's like westerners did. Like the Sooners.
The Sooners, yeah. Stake, stake your ground and nobody takes it away from you.
Well, we'll, we'll establish a timeline for the several steps that will be involved. So you'll hear us talking in, at some times we'll be talking about closing down TIF Two over the next months and, and then the final steps to bring around TIF Five. The state law allows us to fund projects between the respective Tax Increment Financing Districts as long as those districts are contiguous. So the area that will be included in TIF Five will touch at least one and possibly both of our, our remaining TIFs. TIF Four, which is the Business Park, Blackhawk Bank, their, their branch addition out on the Beltway, and then TIF Three, which includes the areas east of 67 and south of Antalouja Road, so all the way out to and including Camden Park. So by, by having these touch and by having them include the area that we have two major transportation projects on the books, both of them the bridges, that will allow those monies to be used flexibly back and forth between the projects. And that can be as a, as a grant, any match, or as a match to any grants that we would receive. So staff recommends the approval of this ordinance.
Comments or questions about it? This is the first step, so you're going to hear a lot more about this as we go over the next quite some time. Comments, questions about it? If the ordinance pretty soon will pass, get this whole thing started until we go. Okay? Would there be a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt ordinance 1806 for the professional services agreement for establishment and annual administration of TIF District Five, just first of many steps. So Greg, roll call, now please, Michelle.
Dan Verbeck.
Yeah.
Jody Lee.
Yes.
Karen Wilson.
Yes.
Bruce Stickel.
Yes.
Dan Shomar.
Yes.
Doug Humphrey.
Yes.
Motion carried, we're on our way. We want to hear more about it, Michelle.
See, the Soon, if, if we settle on this property, won't that speed the process of, of liquidate or closing out Two? Because one of the factors of closing out Two is the, what you do with, what you do with the money, right?
Right. And, and we've got a contingency plan on that, so I think we, we spent a good deal of time talking with Economic Development Group, our TIF consultants, and both Arian and Sean have been on the calls, I have been on it as well, and I think we're going to be okay there. But what this will allow us is the, the closer to the start of TIF Five that we can acquire and begin the development of, of our next property. Our first was the Industrial Park off of 11th Street and Antalouja Road. That goes back historically a long time ago. And then more recently, we've done the Business Park with Stern Beverage being the anchor tenant on that project, and it's grown and expanded, you know, very well. So we've created, you know, tax flow, we've created job employment, so there's a lot of opportunities that resulted because of our Tax Increment Financing District projects over the years. And this keeps that flow going for the next area to the south and southeast.
So this, this, the, this also validates the, the use, I mean, it contributes, I mean...
Yep.
It complements...
It complements...
The program that you're putting in place by, by how you're going to distribute the, to money.
Yep, a necessary component of that path.
Okay, no good. So ordinance 1806 is officially adopted.
Yes.
Okay, it's going to committee reports. Dan?
I do not have anything.
Okay. Jody?
No.
Karen?
Of course I do. I, I would like to ask the elders permission to call an executive closed session for the Monday, October 6th meeting, so that the board can properly be told the findings of the QCOM Village of Mylan investigation.
Yep. Okay, no problem. We'll put that on the agenda for next time.
Yes.
We can't, Lincoln's gone tonight. We need him here for that.
Yeah.
So, okay, is that okay to everybody?
Do we always need legal for closed session?
What's that?
Do we always need legal for closed session?
No, we just...
Just ask.
We don't, but he has, he's been doing some research or will be doing some research. He ended up with a, his son on, on a college tour and then he and his family, his 15th birthday, so happy birthday to him.
Yeah, yeah, a big curse, yeah.
Yeah, and so he's on a trip regarding that, but he did want to be attending that because he wanted to be able to report what his recommendations, his findings are.
Do you know if the other municipalities are in executive session this week and know the findings that we don't?
I don't know their schedule for that.
They're all in meetings this week and they all have executive sessions.
It, it could be.
Okay.
On what their discussion is, there has not been any action taken by the QCOM Board, but it would only be just an update to the respective councils, which we were planning on for October 6th, yes.
Okay.
And that will be before the next QCOM Board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll put that on the agenda for next time. Anything else, Karen?
Um, I, no, not related to this because it goes into the QCOM great area of why the investigator wasn't able to speak. He had to go into closed session even though he was on the agenda in open session. I was confused by that.
For, for the QCOM meeting?
Yeah. He was actually on, supposed to be able to speak about his findings in open session and then the QCOM Board last minute changed it and made him speak in closed session.
I don't know why that would be.
It, it was a call that the chairman made during the meeting. And you're right, it had been, and I had anticipated it would be a discussion in open session and the chairperson chose to take it to closed session. Okay, anything else, Karen?
Nothing right now.
Uh, Dan?
Yeah, so, I know we had talked about MIP, I just talked to Sean, about donating the, what was it, about 14,000? At least 14,000. For the benches. So Sean's supposed to be getting them all ordered. He's actually got it all picked out. So I would say here in the near future, we should be getting the benches that are parks that we picked out west.
Okay.
There's no Daniels, as we said, and then the two at Presbyterian Church.
Oh, there it is.
So Four will be...
There'll be some upset people about that.
Yeah, so they're going to look sharp, so. And then we're going to have our own department put them in, so.
Well, we really can't do Dixon because...
No.
We still haven't decided any, Sean.
Projects in, in, in...
It's in limbo right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as soon as Sean gets with the, I always call it the camper company because that's what they design, but with the designer, we can redo the park and encourage all you guys to jot down your ideals for that park and drop them in my box.
Okay.
At our meeting, we'll definitely bring them all out and try to put something nice together for, for Dixon. I want to get the project going. I think it's been stalling for way too long. So I really want to get that thing going.
Hey, and was the money given to the Village of Mylan Parks Department?
Yeah, for the, for the benches.
Do we have to vote on...
Accepting the money?
Accepting the money.
I don't know.
And spending the money.
You'll get a vote on spending it. Yeah.
Well, then we better accept it.
Yeah, that's what I was...
I just don't remember if we accepted it when she made the, the comment.
When you spend it, you've automatically accepted it, obviously.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I think if, if it were something like grant fundings, which come with strings attached...
Yeah.
That can only be done with council approval.
Yeah.
This one, since it was designated for a purpose, I guess one could consider it restricted funds legally, even though there was an intent with it legally, since there was no contract, it was simply given to the fund to support that activity. I think it's, it's kind of a soft approval.
Yeah, so there you go, Sean.
Yeah, well, it's MIP's project.
It's MIP's project. Couldn't you just...
They're putting in the base with all the strong projects.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
One beautiful thing.
Sad to see them go away, but, um, they did a lot.
And then I just got one question, it's not a committee thing, but it's got a question. And I didn't know where on the agenda to ask this, so I just ask it now. Do we know what's going on with the building owner that we purchased from Rock Island County? Have we got bids to tear that down or...
We have not, we've not gotten title to it yet.
So we...
We voted to purchase.
We got some paperwork in, you signed it the other day, we had to send, we had to send it back in. So we haven't received the actual deed and stuff like that.
Yeah, you're okay.
As soon as we officially, they sent us a receipt for paying for it and they sent us more paperwork, we signed, notarized and sent back.
It usually takes like three months.
I just hate to see that thing under our name and then a kid...
You better get it down before brick falls on some...
I went over and looked at it and it's, it's pretty bad.
I was hoping to get bids out and try and get it tore down before winter got really here, but just see how fast. You know, we're not...
It's, it's a process.
It is what it is, but as long as you guys are working on it.
Well, I think one thing we probably could streamline it, and that would be if the council wanted to okay the process of going out for bids and, and get that lined up and then hold off on the starting date until everything has, because there's also, there's some site work that has to be done and that can only be done after it's our property,
There's still cars in.
And the back, and then inside.
Who knows, inside the building, so working with, with the...
Apply for lots.
So, trying to find, you know, owners or get the tow company to do, you know, they do what they call the C O P, and stuff, and all that, or something. They don't even know what is inside the building needs to be...
So, is there also a historical society, do they got to get involved in that?
No, I've not heard of anything.
Okay.
It's not on the registry of historic places, no.
I didn't know.
We think we can, if we, if we, as a consensus, want to start the process of getting it torn down, we could get...
Many sources of historical sources, right?
Okay, anything else, Doug?
Might have to process the tearing it down, and then also whatever property is left there, just the cleanup of that type of property, and that could go with the tear down, maybe not, I don't know, until we know what's inside.
Get the best of your force.
You call, you call wagons, and hopefully pick up all those cars, we'll make money off of it.
Okay, let's move on. Doug, you have a thing?
Yeah, so, last time, Karen talked about, I think she asked Lincoln to proceed on some research on the, the water benefit that we didn't know that we had, and doing away with it, is, is, is that something that'll be coming up in the next?
Well, at the discussion at that time, I think the council mentioned during comments from the public, your commitment at the rate change to clean up that part of the ordinance.
We take care of it, we do the rates in a few months, several months.
Well, it's just labeled as a rate change.
Well, no, we'll actually have...
Are you talking about the discount?
No, the, well, the, the discount is, is, you know, text within the language, and when we go in and, and calculate what the new operation and maintenance rates will be, and that has to be in ordinance form, so that section can be wiped out.
That'll just be left up.
Okay, you're going to do it all at once?
All at once.
Eliminate the, the pool, the pool fund.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Okay. Steve, any more?
No.
Hearing none, just done committee reports, says it's our opportunity to address the village board, anybody want to address the board? Is anybody on there?
No.
I didn't think so. So, nobody to address the board, leave it open if you want to say anything. Other than that, I'm ready to go home for supper.
I'll make a bunch.
Notice the name, second, it's adjourned, we stand adjourned.
We got one more paper.